Are there any amendments to tonight's agenda?
Madam Chairman, there are not.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I move.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We have in our package minutes from the monthly LRA meeting of July 21st, 2022. Do we have a motion to adopt the minutes as presented?
Move that we receive and adopt the minutes.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Mr. Coniston, no unfinished business tonight?
No ma'am.
Okay. All right, under new business, we have first lease SVCC parking lot, Mr. Coniston?
Yes ma'am. When we were working the last real estate issue with SVCC, we discovered that there was an established parking lot on LRA property with no record of a lease. This is correcting that oversight and with the same terms which were verbally agreed to by the prior administration, that there would be no charge. Again, it's basically a parking lot for SVCC and the staff would recommend that you accept this lease.
Any questions? Do we have a motion to accept the lease as presented by Mr. Coniston?
I move that the lease for SVCC parking lot be accepted.
Do we have a motion?
I second that motion.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next we have a lease Veterans Car Wash.
Yes ma'am, this is a continuing lease, seventy-five dollars per month. Staff recommends entering into the lease with those terms.
All right, do we have a motion to enter into the lease for the Veterans Car Wash?
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Next we have a lease Doris Davis Daycare.
Yes ma'am, this is the existing daycare that's in operation on the backside of the Officers Club. The terms of the lease are eighteen percent of their gross. Staff would recommend continuation of that lease as well.
All right, do we have a motion to continue the lease as presented by Mr. Coniston?
Move to approve the lease for Doris Davis Daycare.
I second that motion.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And finally, we have a lease Schukum Car Repair.
Yes ma'am, again, another existing lease continued. Their rate is at one thousand dollars a month. This is the business that does the automotive repair for Fatsy.
Madam Chair, I make a motion we approve the lease. I second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Informational items?
Yes ma'am, just very quickly, I've shared with the board a photograph of the completed rail spur repair and that has been deemed satisfactory by the Virginia Department of Transportation. The rail has been reconnected as of yesterday, so that project is complete.
Right.
And then for items two and three, you have those in your packet. They are just a list, listing of lease actions in the club income.
Okay. All right, any questions about the informational items? All right, so on the agenda, we have a recommended motion to enter closed session. Does someone make the motion?
Madam Chair, I move that the Fort Pickett Redevelopment Authority of Notaway County, Virginia, adjourn to a closed meeting pursuant to Code of Virginia 2.2-3711A. Three, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose of the disposition of publicly held real property, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, especially property located within Fort Pickett.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to enter closed session, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This meeting will now enter closed session. This meeting of the Notaway County Local Redevelopment Authority when they'll reconvene in open session. Ms. Simmons, can you provide a motion for certification?
Yes ma'am. Whereas the Fort Pickett Local Redevelopment Authority of Notaway County, Virginia, has convened an executive meeting on this date pursuant to the affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this local redevelopment authority that such executive meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Fort Pickett Local Development Authority of Notaway County, Virginia hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirement by the Virginia law were discussed in the executive meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the executive meeting was here discussed or considered by the local redevelopment authority. And three, no action was taken in the executive meeting regarding the items discussed.
We have a motion for certification, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Coniston, will you roll call?
Yes ma'am. Supervisor Bowen, do you so certify?
Yes.
Supervisor Simmons, do you so certify?
Yes.
Supervisor Vaughn, do you so certify?
Yes.
Madam Chairman, do you so certify?
Yes.
I will note for the record, Mr. Rourke did not participate in the executive session.
All right, we'll need a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This meeting is adjourned.
Oh, here comes him. Now the framed one is down on the podium. The manager, which I think that's him right there, I'm not sure.
Okay.
And there's a copy for each, there's twenty in the folder. There's twenty in the folder, well actually, there's nineteen because I gotta have one to read. There's twenty in the folder. Well, actually, there's nineteen because I gotta have one to read.
Would you want to mention that? Good evening. This meeting of the Nottaway County Board of Supervisors will now come to order. I think we have Reverend Chris Hillman with us tonight.
Reverend Hillman, if you would, I just mentioned it to Madam Chair. We had an LRA meeting before and a gentleman's been with the county for a right long time, John Hill. He couldn't make it tonight because his wife is very ill. And so we would like for you to lift her up in your prayers as well. We appreciate that.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for your presence here tonight. As we talk about your will, your ways here in Nottaway County. May our discussions be pleasing to you. Father, we ask that you lift up all who would be here but weren't able to. They're hurting. They've got medical problems and problems of other lives, but Father, you know who they are and what they are. So we give all of it to you at this. We trust you. We know that you are the master here. In your precious name we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
Pastor Chris Hillman from Sharon Baptist in bustling Darby, as I always say. Not bustling, but got mighty flock there. I appreciate you all having here to learn us all. I'm fresh off the mission field. So I'm a little fragile. I'm a little beaten up and I probably need therapy. I've been on a mission all over the world, from India to Bosnia, Oregon, Haiti, earthquake zones. And I've been to this place my third time. Brought my son for the first time, high school kid, and introduced him to it. And I think he's a little messed up too, and that's why he makes probably fallible, but he's not. Went to Slovakia about thirty miles from the border of Ukraine. Could feel some of the rumbling under my feet. I don't know just where from, I didn't ask, but I will say this. The refugees that I came into contact with. Mister Pastor, I was invited to go there and perhaps change some of their lives. They changed my lives. The lessons were given back to me. Bombs dropping down their chimneys, losing everything. Their whole family back home. And here I've got pretty good back where I'm from. So we come back here from a trip like this and it's not unusual to need some therapy. I'm president of the Blackstone pastors association. And naturally all pastors will ask me, tell me some stories about the Ukraine. And when I would begin to say something to them, I would fall apart. So I'm holding it together right now. I'm getting a little bit better. Not quite a month afterwards, but it'll stay quicker. I mentioned the mission field. We are all on the mission field in our own way. You don't have to, as I've said many times, get on a jumbo jet and go on the other side of God's plan. You can do that. You don't have to. There's a whole lot of folks that we ask Father God to be of service to him. He will point the direction, the directions really does give us the words to say. People right here in Arkansas. I do a lot of work also in N W. Similar to this in so many ways. We've got places to serve, people to serve. And God, he loves us and he loves the people here. And he will use all of us to be of service to him. I want to go to scripture, First John, chapter four, verse twelve. No one has ever seen God, but if we love one another, God lives in us right here. Each and every one of us, and his love is made complete in all of us. So I'll remind us that it's through each of us that his voices and his loving ways can be carried on. Pastor Bill Hybel said for each of us to just pick your area of holy discontent. An old buddy, just look around you. You don't have to look too far. Ask God to direct you and guide you and put into your premises, right into your path, someone who needs to hear a special word from you. Not from me, not from her. He or she needs to hear from this gentleman because God knows their mindset, their temperament. Their particular problem is here with this guy is going to have a holy word to give them. Amen. If it's for her, it goes from this gentleman. Just be of service to God and ask him, what can I do for you on this day? I think you would all agree in this day and time right now, here in America, the land of the free and the home of the brave, right here in our beautiful county, which is messed up in many ways and it's all right. Why? Because we're a messed up people. God knew that. But he came and gave us his son to be of use for all of us. So let us go in prayer one more time. Father God, it is about you and it always has been about you, not us. He with the big H, not me, never me. Father, use me, little me, on this day, on this evening and moving forward. Use everyone in this room. Let us humble ourselves. And also remind us that our problems, though they seem insurmountable. Remind us that there are other places on the green earth where people are going through so much. That we need to humble ourselves and say prayer for them. And we need to thank you that you do all throughout this. You love them, you're gonna be with them, and you're gonna make everything right in your perfect time. It's in your righteous name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
God bless you all.
Thank you, Reverend Hillman. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think following the pledge to our flag seems like an appropriate time to announce that Nottaway County has proudly partnered with the National Association of Counties and the Virginia Association of Counties to provide a free flag collection box to help county residents properly dispose of worn United States flags. Our staff reached out to the veterans of foreign wars post seven eight nine seven of Blackstone. This organization has agreed to take the flags and see to their respectful retirement in accordance with the United States Flag Code. The collection box is located in the county administration office, 344 West Courthouse Road, Nottaway, Virginia, and is accessible during normal business hours. This is a nice service. Thank you, Mr. Costin and staff.
Madam Chair, said he can't hear you.
Come on in.
Madam Chairman, if I may at this time, jump ahead, hold the agenda for a second. We are having technical difficulties with the system again. It might be related to the heat that was in the building earlier this afternoon. It was eighty-six degrees in this room. That's why we had the fans open and trying to pull the... It's very cool in the back. Unfortunately, we're not in the back, so we're trying to move some air in. The... Tonight's meeting is being recorded. It will be posted, but it is not being livestreamed for technical reasons.
All right, do we have any amendments to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chairman. Madam Chairman, all members of the board, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. We have two items relative to the approval of the agenda to alter. One is in the consent agenda, item K nine. That should actually be a negative figure. It's a reduction in the anticipated amount of grant funds. And then so also adding K seventeen. This is a additional enforcement grant for the sheriff's department at sixteen thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars. Again, in the consent agenda, item K seventeen added. That's all we have this time.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda with the amendments as presented by Mr. Costin?
So moved.
I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion passes. Mr. Costin, I believe we have special recognition tonight.
Yes, ma'am. It's my pleasure to be able to introduce before the board for its consideration the following resolution. Resolution recognizing the Nottaway Dixie Ponytails All-Star Twelve and Under Girls Softball Team. Whereas the Nottaway Dixie Ponytails All-Star Twelve U Girls Softball Team came together as a team following the 2022 Dixie Youth League softball season end. Whereas the Nottaway Dixie Ponytails All-Star Twelve U Girls Softball Team went undefeated in the District One Tournament, played in Blackstone, Virginia, advancing to the Virginia State Dixie Youth League Girls Softball Tournament end. Whereas the Nottaway Dixie Ponytails All-Star Twelve U Girls Softball Team won five of six games in the state tournament, claiming the title of Virginia State Champions. And whereas the Nottaway Dixie Ponytails All-Star Twelve U Girls Softball Team advanced to the Dixie World Series held in Tioga, Louisiana, representing the Commonwealth of Virginia and Nottaway County as Virginia State Champions, and defeated teams from Florida and Tennessee prior to exiting the tournament, losing to the eventual World Series champion. And whereas the Nottaway Dixie Ponytails All-Star Twelve U Girls Softball Team completed their postseason, finishing in the top four in the Dixie World Series end. Whereas the Nottaway Dixie Ponytails All-Star Twelve U Girls Softball Team displayed good sportsmanship, hard work, and dedication, and proudly represented Nottaway County in Virginia in a positive manner. Now therefore be it resolved that the Nottaway County Board of Supervisors hereby formally recognizes and congratulates the Twelve Dixie Ponytail All-Star Twelve U Girls Softball Team members, their coaches, and manager for completion of a successful and unforgettable postseason effort end. Be it further resolved that the Nottaway County Board of Supervisors expresses the county's appreciation to the players, coaches, and manager for the positive recognition that the Dixie Ponytails All-Star Twelve U Girls Softball Team has brought to Nottaway County, and urges all citizens to reflect upon the work ethic, sacrifice, focus, and friendship that enabled the team to achieve so very much. Proposed for approval this 25th day of August, 2022.
Do we have a motion to adopt the resolution as presented by Mr. Costin?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We'll go down for the presentation.
Would all the team members come forward and line up here? And the coaches and the manager, please? You got a copy of the resolution for each girl. Coaches? Coaches? We've got extra ones there for the young ladies that weren't able to make it. And yourselves, grab one for yourself.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, ladies. You too, Derek. Madam Chair, you know, it brings back memories to these young people, but in seventy-six, we went to the World Series in Tennessee. And I see Rose Wooden out there at softball. She's got sports all in her as well. But Bo Gatz, who's passed away now, he... I went up to bat and he said, Steve, go up and swing at that ball. He said, that pitcher puts his pants on the same way you do, one leg at a time. I said, but Bo, I don't have a mustache. He does. And I'm over twelve years old. But it's good to see that good representation.
Yeah, it is.
Makes my heart do very fond of him.
Oh, yeah.
All right, tonight in the package, we have minutes from the work session of February tenth, 2022, and minutes from our regular monthly meeting, July twenty-first, 2022. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved.
I will second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we welcome delegations from the public. Each speaker to the podium will have up to five minutes. Hugh Joss?
Forget that. Just move along. Go to the next one.
Daryl Garber?
Ladies and gentlemen, I come before you tonight to ask a question. Why do we have a zoning administrator? You're gonna say, well, we have zoning in this county, but I contend we don't. When John Prosizeis was the acting superintendent administrator, he acknowledged to me that there was an error in zoning down on Lee Lake. I personally made John Anzavino aware of it. Mr. Costin, Mr. Zodi, correct me if I'm wrong, has there been any attempt to correct that zoning error? It's been almost two years. I say that after two years, you forfeit your claim, the claim you have zoning, when you have knowledge of a zoning issue and you don't seek to fix it. Do we have a two-tiered justice system in Nottaway County? Rules for these people and rules for these people over here? Down the road from me, there's a house built illegally without building permits. Environmental law was broken, pollution in a state lake. Nothing's been done. This has been ongoing for two years. I have an agricultural building that you can literally pee out of three sides of. I have a man down the road that is paying taxes on an agricultural building he's living in. Heating, air conditioning, water, sewer, electrical. It sounds like a two-tiered system to me. I can't understand it. Maybe we'll have to sort it out in court. But this is wrong. And the worst part is not only am I being cheated tax-wise, every taxpayer in the county is being cheated. Because you're letting one man with full knowledge live in this building that he calls an agricultural building, and everyone else is paying full taxes. I think it's wrong. I'm not a lawyer. I don't play one on TV. But one lawsuit you'll never win is unequal application of the law. Never. I just don't know what to do. I'm frustrated. I've tried for two years to go through the channels to speak to the administration. It doesn't seem to affect anything. I can't get anything done. After two years, I would think the zoning would try to be fixed. If we don't get it fixed soon, we'll do it in court. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
All right, I believe that concludes the delegations from the public. No public hearings. Mr. Costin, we have employee recognitions this evening.
Yes, ma'am, we do. We have a one-year acknowledgement for Susan C. Hickman, library substitute. Demetrius M. Nelson, library branch manager. M. Nelson, library branch manager; Albert L. Haskins, convenience site attendant. Oliver J. Johnson, Jr., convenience site attendant.
JJ.
And in this group, last and least, myself. But I'm good. I've got one on every suit.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right, five-year certificates. Jacqueline S. Zadowiski, library director. Dean S. Lewis, certified building and code official, erosion and sediment control administrator, and biosolite supplier monitor.
Big Dean.
And Gail G. Silvassi, library substitute. That concludes the recognitions, ma'am chair. I guess this means I have to get a new suit.
Yep, I've got to get another one.
All right, this evening, we have with us Terry Abston, unit coordinative extension office, introducing a new staff member.
Actually, two.
Two, good.
We've got a full house.
Good.
I just want to thank the board for letting us come and introduce our new employees. We have Abby Messer as our AFA, that's Administrative Fiscal Assistant. And then Reed Blackwell is our Natural Resource Agent.
Right. Welcome.
Thank you all. Glad to have you.
All right, we'll move on to department reports. Is Ms. Bryant here this evening?
She's not, ma'am. You have her report in your agenda.
Right. Dr. Grimes, not here. Mr. Hyde, do you want to provide your emergency services a report? This is Mr. Hyde, emergency services coordinator for the county.
All right, thank you, buddy.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, staff, and citizens, good evening.
Good evening.
In addition, my report's in your packet. If you have any questions of me tonight, I'm glad to answer those. But I had two additional things, and I wanted to hand them to you just now. Happy to report that today, we were able to finalize some training venues that are coming up. We have an exciting class coming in crews at Top Sheet, coming from Norfolk Southern. This is something they did years ago. It's been done before, but it's been a while. So in coordinating with all the fire chiefs, we saw a need to do it again. They asked me to go ahead and set that up. So we're having them down on September the 13th. I talked to Chief Wilson today. I think we're going to try to have some finger food and some refreshments for them as well, hoping for a big crowd over at the crew fire station. Second page I handed to you is a really exciting federal class, and this is something we've been working on a couple of months to try to finalize. But we're dealing with the Center for Rural Development, which actually works through VDEM. And by coordinating these classes and having VDEM advertise it on a state level, we may have an audience that expands past Notaway County borders. But what we're going to try to do is get all of our faith-based community leaders into this class. And that's why I held it here in Notaway County, because we're starting this faith-based group, which is in my packet report that we met on August the 11th. And so what we're trying to work on now is something that is really a federal push and a state push to get all faith-based organizations active in your community deployment. And so the fabric of our communities, you know, are really in 48 churches and counting in Notaway County. So we contacted the 48 churches. We've had a couple of meetings. These groups are putting their leaders out into the meetings with us. We're having virtual meetings, and we're hoping that this class is really there for them. We're going to hopefully fill it up with Notaway County citizens. And then, of course, the advertisement will bring in others. And we're planning on having it at the Burkeville Elementary School, which is where our shelter supplies are stored. And it kind of is a twofold purpose to this, in that we can get them out there for the class, and then we can show them what the supplies are, so that when they help social services and others with sheltering, they'll be a little bit familiar with that Burkeville stock. And with that, I'm open for any questions that you may have on the report that I submitted to you this month.
Madam Chair, I don't have a comment on the report, but I would like to speak freely with Mr. Hyde if I could. So, buddy, looking at my calendar here, so September 12th, they've added, and I'm glad the town manager from Blackstone is up front, too. That morning, we had, they've connected, VCBR's got a new piping system, and they've connected it to Piedmont, which is old piping system, 1950 stuff. And they did a pressure test, and it got up to like 80 to 100, and it, all of a sudden, like I had four busted piping systems across the campus. And so we're going to critique that situation September 14th. I would like for you to attend that. I want to thank the town of Burkeville, because I just didn't have the expertise or the equipment there to, and you know, you've got geriatric patients, and I can't go without water for so long. And so, but I was, Philip, I was this close calling you with the next, you know, of town of crew. I just didn't know what else to do. I needed three, I had one backhoe, I needed two more, and it was just a mess. So I would like for you to maybe attend that, to give us some ideas of who we can lean on if we ever get in a situation like that again, you know, so.
Sure, be glad to.
Okay, and I'll get you an invite for that.
Okay, be glad to, Mr. Born.
But I would like publicly to thank town of Burkeville for coming in and helping me as well, you know, so. And I'm sure both, all towns would have helped, all I had to do was ask the question, so.
You said September 14th?
Yes, sir.
Okay, sure, sure. We have the class on the 13th. The 14th should be open. I'll take a look at it.
Okay.
And we will try to have that. Also, we had your representative at a local LEPC meeting. We're glad to have your representative from your facility. Also, just in closing, managing three grants, which were not on your handout, they've been on previous handouts in your board pack, but we're closing out three type of grants now, and getting ready to start two more grants in September. So it's been a lot of, been a lot of email, a lot of phone work on that, but these are the things that are going on that we're not in detail in your report, but I'll have more on those when we close those out.
Any other questions for Mr. Hyde tonight?
No, thank you for everything you're doing. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Good evening.
There are no plumbing systems that are capable of taking over 80 pounds of pressure. So once you get to 80 pounds, it's supposed to be a reducer on that.
Right.
So that's the reason you're going to have blowouts.
Yeah, I think our problem is our sprinkler system is tied to our potable water system on the same piping, and so that's the problem.
Yeah, but yeah, basically, no regular water systems capable of taking more than 80 pounds of pressure on a normal basis.
Thank you.
That's why you're going to have blowouts.
Thank you. Mr. Zodi, we have Greg Zodi, Planning and Economic Development Director, with us tonight.
Yeah, so what I'd like to jump to, good evening.
Good evening.
Is basically during the public comment, what I'm doing is, in between other tasks, is creating a zoning enforcement system. We do not have one in the county, and we've never had one, to the best of my knowledge. We have no records of previous violation cases, so I'm starting from scratch. I've had the fortunate opportunity to work with Commonwealth's attorney and her assistant as well. And I basically have to process everything, go before the magistrate and everything, and then if it gets referred by the magistrate to go to court, then I'll work with Ms. Waltris and her staff. So at this point, I don't want to speak on the record regarding ongoing investigation. I'm happy to speak with you all individually. The records are open, so I'm more than happy to go through the process with you all. Having said that, today I had the opportunity to go to Danville to attend the CEA. It's a Controlled Environmental Agricultural Strategy and Roadmap in the Go Virginia Region 3. And the whole point of this was to discuss aquaculture and hydroculture. That's a new emerging technology, and we had several good speakers, and it's just one more thing we can consider with our 10 vacant parcels down the road, once we get site improvements made. I think that's something to consider. We want to market that, and that is very, very strong, has a very, very strong presence in, say, Tazewell, and I forgot the county, Martinsville, for doing the aquaculture, where you can have, grow fish, tilapia, or whatever. They're actually doing freshwater salmon down in Tazewell. Growing up in Blacksboro, I can't believe anyone in Tazewell liked salmon. But this is, I think, a great opportunity for the county to consider, for one more economic opportunity, development opportunity. Go Virginia supports this, and Brian David, the director, said it the best. He said, "Our sole purpose is to create higher-paying jobs, not just get a manufacturer and get, you know, just labor, but to have specialized training opportunities partnering with our local community colleges." So it was a good four-hour conference for me, and I look forward to working with Go Virginia again. And also, Mr. David's going to come down and meet with Mr. Costin and I as well, along with Ms. Foster in the very near future, to talk about other opportunities. So that's, I just wanted to address that zoning part, but I, like I told you, my first night here, I've been doing this 30 years, but this is the first time in 30 years I've had to go from zero to one or two. And so it's just getting that, I need to understand the process. I've always had a county attorney working with me, not the Commonwealth's attorney, county attorney. So this is something new for me as well. So we're all learning, but we are going to follow the book. I treat everyone equally, so everyone will, some people may equally hate me for enforcing the ordinance, but I do enforce the ordinance. We currently have 13 active cases right now, just to let you all know. And anytime you all want to discuss this in closed session, more than happy to discuss it. Okay?
Any questions for Mr. Zodi tonight? Thank you, Mr. Zodi.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
With the board's permission, I'd like to offer as an adjunct or addendum to Mr. Zodi's economic development report, some comments. At a recent public hearing, I think as an illustration of this board's financial incompetence, a citizen reported on a recent $3 million sale of a piece of property that the county previously owned and sold in 2020 for $350,000. This was a 17.28 acre parcel located on East Colonial Trail Highway, known at the time of sale as Piedmont Park. The county purchased the property in 2005 for $129,600. At the time of the sale in 2020, the site had no improvements, and there were no public utilities, water or sewer. And that may have contributed to the fact that the property remained with the county for 15 years despite reported attempts to market and sell it. In 2020, when a company wishing to place a distribution facility on the site approached the county about purchasing the property, the county paid for a professional appraisal, which estimated an as-is value of $415,000. In considering a $350,000 offer, the board debated its alternatives and considered the information that was available at the time. We discussed the possibility of the county incurring costs to run public utilities and perhaps install a deceleration lane to make the property more marketable, and we discussed whether we would recoup a worthwhile return on that kind of investment. We considered the fact that a $350,000 sale price, though it's $65,000 lower than the appraised value at that time, it still represented a 170% gain on the county's original investment. We considered that this was a legitimate project by an experienced developer and is an economic opportunity. And finally, we considered the fact that this sale would put the property after 15 years back on the county's tax rolls. In summary, the sale did not occur without thoughtful consideration by county administration and this board. And based on the information that was available to us at the time, it was not as unreasonable of a transaction as has been portrayed. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Are there any other representatives from departments that want to comment on their departmental reports? Any questions from the board? Oh, I'm sorry, it's Dean, I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a comment about the public hearing, I mean, the public comments. DEQ and I met on that property on Lee Lake on the 16th of this month, and we again went over the property. We were in discussions with DWR, which is the Department of Wildlife Resources, as well as DEQ, which is the Department of Environmental Quality, as far as the runoff into the Lee Lake, and we were taking care of it. I'm still waiting for the report to come back.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to constitutional officers. Sheriff Jones, do you have anything?
Something to report, thank you.
Any other constitutional officers here this evening? Well, again, with the board's permission, because this applies to some degree to the offices of our constitutional officers, a couple of remarks. At an August 10th, 2022 public hearing, a citizen expressed concern that the county does not have an appropriate internal controls in place over its reconciliation process, and that an official audit finding had not been publicly addressed. County staff followed up on the citizen's report and has provided the board with a response. On January 26, 2022, Mr. Paul Lee, representing the county's audit firm, Robinson Farmer Cox Associates, reported fiscal year 21 audit findings to the Board of Supervisors in open session. Mr. Lee informed the board of a management letter relating to the fact that members of appointed boards and commissions had not submitted required financial statements to the county. The county has subsequently sought compliance, and in some circumstances, no longer recognizes certain persons as serving in those capacities. Mr. Lee also noted a reported weakness concerning a conflict in staff's compiling of data for annual audits while simultaneously maintaining independence from the process. He recommended that the county retain an independent governmental auditing consultant, a practice which is employed by a number of jurisdictions in the Commonwealth, particularly those with limited staffing. In addition to helping ensure independence in the preparation of pre-audit documentation, this third-party consultant would help to educate staff on the ever-evolving Governmental Accounting Standards Board requirements, and would reduce the onsite fieldwork of the audit firm. Following its acceptance of the audit report on January 26, the board approved the recommended third-party hire, and the county subsequently contracted with a consultant. This new position process was funded in the fiscal year 23 budget, and was just one of several often-made audit recommendations that were undertaken for the first time. Along these same lines, the recently recognized personal property tax relief errors in the Commissioner of Revenue's office resulted in questions about the extent of the audit for that office. Staff has provided the board with a copy of a letter that is issued annually by the Virginia's Auditor of Public Accounts. The most recent letter was dated August 30th, 2021, was addressed to Mr. Vaughn, the then chairman of the board, and the letter reads, "Mr. Vaughn, we have reviewed the Commonwealth collections and remittances of the treasurer, commissioner of the revenue, and sheriff of the locality indicated for the year ended June 30, 2021. Our primary objectives were to determine that the officials have maintained accountability over Commonwealth collections, established internal controls, and complied with state laws and regulations. The results of our tests found that constitutional officers complied in all material respects with state laws, regulations, and other procedures relating to the receipt, disbursement, and custody of state funds." And as I understand, this is an annual occurrence that basically has been the same good report ever since. Do we know, Mr. Costin, exactly what audits and regulatory reviews cover? Do we know, Mr. Costin, exactly what audits and regulatory reviews cover?
No, ma'am. I don't.
Do you think that's something we could find out and could be reported to the board? So we'll...
To make sure we're covering, you're trying to figure out where does it start and where does it stop? Is that what you're getting at?
That's right.
That's a good point.
Be happy to.
Okay. Thank you, board. All right. I guess we'll move on to unfinished business. Mr. Costin, website update?
Yes, ma'am. The board asked for an update on this. You have a memo prepared by the lead staff, Ms. Kelly, Ms. Tucker. To summarize, we're ready to go active with the website with new material. There are some final technical protocols to launch a new YouTube channel tied into that website for live streaming, and as you can see, that's a challenge. And those are being addressed now. The new content is ready, as I've indicated, but there is some additional effort to try to bring in the old meeting videos to the new site. It may be a situation where we just have to say those are accessible by going outside the site to the original platform. The other option would be to consider, how long do you want to retain that information on the website? Five years back, 10 years back, forever? That's a consideration. I will just like to iterate one item that's stated at the top of the second page of the memo, and that is, there are guaranteed snags during the transition due to how often and which site is accessed. So expect a few comments from citizens, and those are the types of issue that should smooth themselves out as the new site's traffic increases. Certainly, we would welcome any feedback, but we can go with, forward with the new website about mid-September. And also attached to the back of that memo are some sample screenshots of what the website would look like. Be happy to take any questions you have at this time.
Questions for Mr. Costin?
Is it the board's desire to go active mid-September with what we have, even though we may not be completely in sync with the live streaming?
I would think so.
We've got to move forward.
Yeah, I would think so, too. And I guess, you know, to have a good website just needs to be updated.
Regularly.
I would say a lot. You're right. Nothing worse than to have people on there that's not even working for us and that kind of thing, you know? But anyway.
All right. We'll do that.
Do you need a motion on that, Mr. Costin?
If you, I've got a consensus.
Okay. So is that a yes or a no to a motion? Probably not.
I don't think we need a motion. You all have authorized the creation of a new website previously, so I think that's just a status report.
Okay. And next, under unfinished business, requests for real estate tax exemption.
Again, Madam Chairman, members of the board, you asked for some additional information. Working with the Commissioner of the Revenue and also county staff reaching out to the State Corporation Commission, we have identified that there are 106 entities listed by the State Corporation Commission as holding federal 501(c)(3) status in Nottaway County. And those items, you have a list of those in your packet. The Commissioner of Revenue has also provided a breakdown of the classifications of exempt property. These include federal, state, regional, local, religious, charitable, education, or other, and she notes cemeteries, and the totals that are in each of those categories. Many of these, and I double-checked with Ms. Hudson today, many of these are actually established either by federal law or state law that are deemed to be exempt. The board has a pending request by Help for the waiving of taxes and making it an exempt property, 314 South Main Street, Blackstone. The board can either pursue this, and if they do, they will authorize staff to proceed to a public hearing on the matter. The advertisement for that hearing has to be paid by the applicant, in this case, Help, or if you decide not to pursue it, then simply a motion not to proceed with the original request. Be happy to take any questions you might have.
I'm just looking at the mission. So the mission is to, they provide relief for people who need help with rent, electricity, satellite, food distribution. How long has it been established? Does it matter how long they've been there? Mayor, how long?
They were established in 1990 by the Blackstone Administrative Association. I would just say, you, as mayor, when people can't pay their light bills, it's the first group I refer them to. And the thing about Help that I respect is, you get, Jerry Koval, if I make a mistake, forgive me, they'll give one-time assistance to folks, but the condition where you don't just give out money, they're making sure people take a financial literacy course, maybe better plan, advertise. But I know that during the pandemic, we had a big fundraiser, Attorney Brother, they pledged $2,500 if we match it, and they gave a lot of money and food during the pandemic. Just want to throw that out there.
Yeah, that's good stuff. Thank you, Mayor.
We're not talking about a lot of money either.
When people need help, they need help. So what do we need to do?
Madam Chair, I move the staff be directed to take those actions necessary to undertake a public hearing in September by the board to consider waiving real estate taxes on property known as 314 South Main Street, Blackstone, owned by the Help, a 501(c)(3) organization serving Nottaway County.
I second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Like, the motion passes. We'll set a date for a public hearing.
Your next meeting is September.
The board meeting is September.
The board meeting is September.
Okay. All right. Good.
All right. So next, on, under unfinished business, fiscal year 23 budget adjustments, public hearing.
Yes, ma'am. You have a memo from Ms. Tomer, the Assistant County Administrator, who's not with us this evening. She's on vacation, laying out budget adjustments by topical area, the sheriff, the American Rescue Plan Act, schools for two. Some additional information has been provided by the schools, which was conveyed to you yesterday. You have a suggested motion to authorize a public hearing, again, for the September regular board meeting, to consider amendments to the fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget totaling Staff does recommend proceeding with that budget adjustment hearing.
Any questions for Mr. Costin? We have a motion to authorize the public hearing.
Yeah, so moved, Madam Chair. I moved authorize public hearing for the September regular meeting, board meeting, to consider amendments to the fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget totaling $4,136,030.77. That's a lot of money.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right.
All right, we'll move on to new business. First item is leach aid agreement.
Yes, ma'am, Chairman, members of the board, and I recognize that the town manager for Blackstone is with us this evening. He and I have been working for several months developing a leach aid agreement. Leach aid, for those of you that don't know, is basically the water that runs through and passes through trash at the landfill. It's directed in basically a holding pond, and then it has to be maintained at a certain level by state regulations. So to maintain that regulation, the water is hauled off and taken for treatment similar to household sewage. The county and the town have negotiated a slight increase in the per gallon rate, but I will tell you, it is a better rate than we can achieve anywhere else, in particularly proximity of location. We don't have to drive over to Hopewell or some other area, which, with the gas prices being what they are, would also be a cost. In exchange for this, we will pay that rate, but we'll also accept their sludge from the wastewater treatment plant at no cost to the town of Blackstone. It's a you-scratch-my-back, I'll-scratch-your-back type of agreement. Staff recommends that it go forward, and I believe, Mr. Van Orbach, the council has approved it. Council has approved it as it's presented before you this evening.
Any questions?
Madam Chair, we sure, we want to keep our leach aid and our sludge with our family, so. You're going to put the motion on forward.
Madam Chair, I move the board authorize...
I move the board authorize the county administrator to execute the leach aid as source disposal agreement as presented between the town of Blackstone and Nottaway County.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we've approved the leach aid agreement.
Thank the county administrator and also the town manager for that negotiations. I appreciate it.
All right, next item is delinquent tax list.
Yes, ma'am. You have provided in your packet, in your packet, the list of delinquent tax bills for both personal property and real estate that's been provided by the treasurer. Business as usual would be authorization of the staff to have that list published in the paper in an attempt to make collections. Am I on it?
Which is like, I'm looking for Bowen. I mean, I've got some cousins here, but I'm not going to shut up.
Any questions about the tax list? Are we looking for the motion to move forward publication?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
We have a motion to...
I'm looking for it.
Oh, there's...
There's not one. Okay, I move to...
It's routine.
For the publication of the delinquent tax.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second that motion.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Publication of the delinquent tax list is approved. Mr. Costin, consent items?
Yes, ma'am. The consent items are noted on the agenda, and then they're in your packet. They are detailed. Again, we'll remind the board, we amended the agenda to add K17 for the Sheriff's Department in the amount of $16,456. Thank you, Bowen, I had it written in the other spot. And then also, K9 is a negative figure. You have the detailed memo from Ms. Tomer, and again, all of the supporting material follows. Staff would recommend that you approve the consent agenda as presented.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion. We approve the consent items as presented with the amendments that Mr. Coxon just spoke of.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Consent items are approved as presented with the amendments. Any questions about the correspondence, information items in our package this evening? County administrators' report?
All right. Thank you, Madam Chairman. So in my report, I'll highlight just a few things. Last week, Mr. Vaughn, Ms. Simmons, I think later on, Mr. Bowen, attended the VACO Summit. Things happen for a reason sometime. The table that we sat at, we were joined by a member of the Louisa County Board of Supervisors, and over lunch, we had a very good discussion about their solar experiences. They are, they host one of the facilities that has gotten a lot of attention about the erosion and sediment control issues with that development. The gentleman was very forthcoming and said, "We've learned a lot," and they believe the state's learned a lot. And during those presentations, we heard from representatives at the secretary level, from the Secretary of Agriculture and Forest, Natural Resources, and cautiously optimistic about solar. At the same time, we would hear from economic development interest that were gung ho. And I think that the truth lies somewhere in the middle. So the back and forth, the consideration that this board has given to solar and will be given to solar is not unusual. It's happening across the state, and it's happening at the state level. Happy to announce that we received word today that the VADI grant is in, so that's that second round of broadband, that grant application has been submitted and has been recognized as being submitted. The regional reassessment RFP is out, and we would hope sometime in September to perhaps start that process of selecting a firm in coordination with the Commissioner of Revenue to conduct the assessments in 2023. I do need to note that the county has experienced two retirements in the last couple of weeks. Fred Davenport, maintenance employee, and Gray Seymour, our animal control officer. And then I would like to also address the zoning enforcement issue. That's kind of where I cut my teeth professionally, and it is very unusual to come into a locality that has had zoning as long as Nottaway and not really find it to be actively pursued. The records that we have been able to find indicate that multiple violation notices have been sent, but they weren't sent certified. So you can't prove that the person was ever on notice. So we are literally rebuilding, I will say rebuilding, we are literally building a process. Mr. Zodi has some experience in the area, I have some experience in the area, but we are having to build a process from the ground up. Ask for your patience. We are pursuing, we've had conversations with the Commonwealth's Attorney, we've had conversations with our own county attorney, trying to address the issue, as Mr. Lewis indicated. Where they are overlapping and multiple issues are in play, we are bringing in those other concerns as well, the Health Department, DEQ, whoever they may be. We've even had one where we had to bring in the Highway Department because of the junk vehicle that was sitting out in the right-of-way on a piece of property, and we were able to get that vehicle at least moved out of the right-of-way. So we are doing enforcement. That's all I have, unless the board has any questions for me. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. I do have one more thing. In the memo, I said that one of the things I would like to go over is this Boards and Commissions. So each of the board members has a packet of various boards and commissions, and I'd like to start with one that is relatively recent, Local Board of Building and Code Appeals. This is one where it's been reestablished in the last year. The people have been appointed, they've had their first meeting. This one's good. We're in good shape here. The next one's the Board of Zoning Appeals. This is one where we have brought to you all's attention the need to reappoint some of the members. Those appointments have been done, but there are appointments coming up in February and March of 2023. So when those appointments are made, we will stagger those out like they should be staggered. Planning Commission. We have multiple, and I'm not asking for any action this evening. This is just awareness, and we'll put this on the agenda in September, but we have multiple folks who need to be reappointed. Now, the rule is, you continue to serve until either you're replaced or reappointed. So there's no issues there. Everybody's good. We just need to formally reappoint these folks. And there are two vacancies, and they appear to be in Mr. Rourke's district. And you'll see that one is a general appointment, and there's one that it doesn't have to be. We can't find anything that says that you have to do it this way, but we do note that there is one Planning Commission member from the town of Burkeville and one from Blackstone. There is not one from Creve. So I would ask perhaps for, Mr. Rourke, if you would please, to maybe think of some folks to bring forward next month.
Well, I've actually been working with some of the Planning Commission board members for some suggestions as well.
Okay, thank you. The Social Services Board, you have that one, and we have learned that the, you will have some appointments on that coming up because there is a state regulation that a person can only serve two terms. So there will be some folks there that... So, there will be some folks there that need to be thanked for their service and someone else replaced. Library Board, pretty straightforward. No immediate, excuse me, yes, you do have one coming up in late '22.
In it this month.
And then the Literacy Board. They have asked for all of these folks to be reappointed, and their communication came in late July, so that's why there's a July date there. But again, we'll ask for action on those next month. You have a list of just some additional boards, and there is a vacancy in the South Central Workforce Development Board. We had some communications on that today. And then the IDA. And the problem, I will say, the problem here has been an issue of people wanting to comply with the conflict of interest requirement. The two, the two folks you have seen listed there have submitted their documentation. So, again, as, as we proceed through this, any recommendations? If you'd bring them forward to the staff, we'll, we'll manage it and bring them back before you in a little bit more cohesive manner as we approach each of these boards and commissions. I'd be happy to take any questions you have at this time, but that concludes my report.
Maybe I missed it, Mr. Rourke on our Piedmont Regional Jail Board?
Yeah, this is, this is, these, these don't include all the ones.
Yeah, I got you, okay.
Various ones that you're.
Yeah, like Crawford.
Your step.
I got you.
Yeah, that's, that's not including the board or my roles.
Okay.
These are local.
Got you, I'm with you now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Coxton.
Yeah, good report, thank you.
All right, final comments from members of the board, Vice Chairman Bowen.
Well, since we were talking about boards, and I know what we're going to say, the board, I think people need, okay, I've getting, I'm getting a lot of calls about the, and I guess this is a board of elections situation, but I'm getting a lot of calls on asking me, do we have some type of state police investigation on our voting registers? Is that, is that happening? Do y'all know that?
You got nothing to do with us?
There, on the current registrar, I'm not aware of any investigation. There, there is a couple of active investigations supposedly underway.
Well, I told him, I said, don't go off with gossip, because I don't know if it's gossip or not, but we got a very important election coming up in November. And are we ready for that? I mean, do we know that? Can we get a report from our registrars, maybe come next meeting and say, hey, we need, we need a vote of confidence here, I mean, so that we're going to be okay? And I know it's chairman, you're going to say, we need to stay out of elections, I get that. But people come to us and ask us these questions, and I don't know how to answer.
I have to answer.
And, and let me be a little bit more specific.
Okay.
We do know that there is the issue, an investigation regarding the poll books and some laptops and thumb drives.
Okay.
That ended up in Sussex County. And Sussex County, as, as we were finding out about that, Sussex County was turning it over to the state police.
Maybe that's what they're referring to then, okay. I don't know, okay. Yeah, I think the public might want to hear that, hey, we're ready for November. That's all, I didn't, you know.
Mr. Rourke?
Madam Chair, upon my travel tonight, I had a couple of citizens approach me about an issue, and I'm just going to take care of this right now. I moved to grant the town of Blackstone permission to run a water line along Cox Road to the entrance of Fort Pickett at a time of their choosing, further to allow the town of Blackstone to have authority factors over connection options.
All right, we have a motion about water line to Cox Road. Do we have a second?
I'll second for discussion. I feel like somebody just knocked me aside the head and I can't see right now. So, I'll second for discussion, Madam Chair.
Okay.
So, is this the same one we, okay.
It is.
It is. Can somebody tell me what the log jam is, us?
It is.
Let me just talk to you.
Okay. Madam Chair.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm trying to find that.
To speak to this motion, and like I said, I do not mean to blindside y'all, y'all tonight, there were several people that approached me when I walked in the door tonight and asked me to put the motion back on the floor because about four or five months ago, we did that, and it was voted down, and it was understood by the public that there was going to be another motion put on the floor in 30 days. No action has been taken, therefore, when they come to me, I just wanted to take the action.
So, Mr. Rourke, just to clarify, your motion was just to give the town permission, just to give them right of way to run the?
Yes, ma'am. Because as I understand it, when they apply for grants as well, if they don't have permission to run it or the access, they'll say, okay, is that in y'all's area to service? And if it's not, well, they can't get the grant approved because they need access to run that line.
We've got some Blackstone town officials here, any comments on?
Well, I think, I'll give you a little bit of history, I think it was 2019. You haven't stepped to the mic.
You step, so we can, can you step through it?
We don't know who you are.
In 2019, in 2019, I think Billy wrote a.
Looks like a rock stall.
Billy wrote a letter to the county asking permission for the town to run a water line based on several complaints from foot ladies that had come to the office and other residents and that sort of thing, because they do have a documented problem with the water. I can't tell you a chemical composition of the water, but it looks mighty bad. The lady brought a jar in, and it was, it was mighty dingy. It's a lot of bored wells in that area. Business people like Frankie Williamson, the gentleman that owns the Wilburn store, people like that have come to me in the past and asked about water. So, beginning in 2019, I think then county administrator Ronnie and John Procyce, I think they did some surveying down there and, you know, asking people to respond and do you want to be on it. And I think ultimately, we ended up with 30 responses, 20, it was 50/50, and I think some people came back and said they would be interested in changing their vote and getting on to the town system, or they, like Joe McMillan, I think he came to a meeting and he said, hey, you know, I didn't respond the first time, but I'd like to be on it. So, I think it was a majority of folks up there that wanted it. The original price, and I'm throwing out some rough numbers because I don't have it in front of me, it was about $1,400,000. And, you know, there's also some self-interest for the town as well, not only solving a health problem, but we also believe that junction or that intersection at 460 is a logical economic development growth point, certainly for the town, entrance into Pickett, FASI employees, National Guard employees, all those kinds of folks coming in there. The original 1.4 million would have stopped at the main gate road, you know, we call it Military Road, at that junction right there. And that, that house that was at that corner, or the nearest house, was the one that was having the most problems with their well. The price was $1,400,000 at that time, and I'm, again, round numbers. And it had taken some time, we had a couple of meetings up at town office, and citizens came in, we had hosted two public meetings for folks. And in the meantime, as with everything, the price has gone, so it nearly doubled, the price has nearly doubled. We hadn't gotten a definitive response from the county, and in May, we had to submit our Health Department applications. They had announced, the Health Department announced that there's infrastructure monies. I think we've heard that, that tune on the news. There was a bipartisan infrastructure plan approved, and the Health Department of the State of Virginia put out a call for our applications, and the town applied, but we didn't have a definitive answer from the county, so it was not included in the application. That application does include, if successful, an aeration system. If you ever drive over the reservoir, usually see bubbles coming up. Ain't no bubbles coming up, not anymore. The, the piping and, and some of the controls need to be replaced, and that's actually ongoing. We applied for almost $10 million to run a new raw, raw water line from the reservoir to the water treatment plant as a result of two things. The first of which is, it's 80 years old, and we have concerns about it. The second of which was, when the prison system and behavioral health folks came to us originally, we started looking at, how do we get the water to Crewe if that were to come to fruition? And one of the things that our engineers brought up was, not just running a line between Blackstone and Crewe, but they have grave concerns about the integrity of 80-year-old water line. Because if you didn't know, the town of Blackstone only produces 400-plus thousand gallons a day of water, and I think Crewe produces 150% more than that. They produce, I think, 600,000 or 700,000 gallons of water. So, it's a significant, or 50% increase, it's a significant amount more water that's pumped out of Crystal Lake every day than it is out of the reservoir. By doing so, it's going to cause pressure issues.
Yeah.
And an 80-year-old pipe, we think, needs to be replaced. So, that application was for aeration, replace the pipe for two purposes, one is old, and two, it's our first step, it needs to be done anyhow, but it would be the first step to get a water line to Crewe. And it will enable us to pump and increase our permit from 3.28 million gallons a day to 5 million gallons a day. The safe yield at the reservoir is 9 million gallons a day by permit.
Wow.
That project, if funded, will allow us to pump up to 5 million gallons a day to the water treatment plant, and subsequently, a portion of it will go up to Crewe if that were to come to fruition. We believe that that project's still viable. We believe that those kinds of things can happen. We also believe that in that application, we applied for replacing the significant number of water lines in Taylor's Bottom. And I use that term, if people know Carver Street, probably in Mr. Vaughn's district, Carver Street, Taylor Street, Sullivan Street. We believe that's the next logical place for us to do a comprehensive community development project, much like we're doing on the East End now. Streets, curb and gutter, water sewer, housing improvements. We haven't heard back yet, but it does not include Cox Road. Subsequently, based upon the increasing cost on Cox Road, I made a recommendation to council that we just need to sit tight for now because we just can't come up with twice as much money. And we weren't asking the county for any of that 1.4 million. We think, again, there's a self-serving interest too, that we want to get utilities ultimately, and there is an economic development or industrial customer who is very interested in having water for processing and fire protection. He's on Wells now, it's the old Cox Lumber property. Mr. Dudley has been in contact with me several times. That's where we stand.
So, would it, how would, would it benefit you now for us to know that you had the right of way if the opportunity arose to run this water line to?
On the right of way? I think the.
Well, I guess that's what we're, we're.
Yeah.
The right of way is VDOTs.
Pardon?
VDOT will have to grant the right of way. It wouldn't come from the county. What the county would have to do is allow us to mandate connection.
Right.
And that's the kicker. That's what's caused the blockage, is the mandated connection for two reasons. One, we're going to size the pipe big enough so it would serve that area, okay? We could probably get away with a six, but we, I think, are proposing a 10, okay? To get enough pressure, something were to go up there, enough water that might get up there. The problem is, you don't have enough customers, the water's going to be no better than what they're pulling out of the, out of their wells, because you're constantly going to have to be flushing it. Because if you don't have enough users, it's just not going to be the high quality water. And that's why we're in.
Exactly what are you going to need from us tonight.
Do I need from you?
Yes.
One, if we're going to move forward, and council will have to reconsider their motion that was adopted to stop process on it, I think we would obviously need certainly the financing to get from where we had intended to terminate over to 460, and I don't think $500,000 is the figure, I think you're going to spend half of that just getting under the railroad tracks, to tell you true. And a mandatory connection, permission to mandate connections for citizens that are outside the town of Blackstone.
Can we use ARPA, ARPA money?
Madam Chairman, members of board, this is kind of where we jumped in, and Mr. Van Orbeek, you know, make, make sure my memory's not fuzzy here. The last community meeting, which was the first one for me, that we discussed the possibility of that line, and Mr. Van Orbeek's already touched on it, going all the way out to the interchange.
Yes, ma'am.
So that we could get the turnover in the water and be able to avoid the, the mandatory connection fee.
The mandatory.
Right, the, the, the problem with this.
And I talked about that the last time he was up here. It's no longer mandatory. Up until this point, it was mandatory. Everyone had to hook up on that road, and that's where our problem came.
I think in order for us to do that, I think any lender, including the Virginia Resource Authority, is going to require a mandatory connection. Now, there was one solution that I talked to Mr. Coxton and Mr. Vaughn one night after that second meeting, is Mr. Dudley, who owns, and I can't.
Contract lumber.
Contract lumber?
Contract lumber.
But there's two properties out there. One is doing more lumber storage, and the other one is the old treatment plant, which is, if you're leaving Blackstone, be on the right-hand side when you cross over the bridge. That's the gentleman who wants 16, potentially 16,000 gallons a day of water, which is a good user. That's a lot more than all those folks combined down there. If that can happen, then potentially, the town could work on maybe not having to mandate the residential connections. I think we'll get the vast majority of them, but we got to have somebody using water at the end of that pipe, otherwise, we've, we've solved no problem.
And so, and to Mr. Vaughn's reference, yes, we have listed on the potential ARPA project list, this project at about a half million dollars, but as you said, that probably wouldn't get you the engineering.
It's going to get you under the bridge and about there.
That's, that's about it. So, it always boils down to money. Now, going in for a loan or something like that, you know, this, it's a fairly significant capital project, regardless of who's footing the bill or contributing and footing the bill, it's a fairly significant capital project.
So, Mr. Rourke, was your motion tonight just to allow the access to get to the, the original, it was simply a right of way, but Mr. Van Orbeek, you're saying it's not the county that grants the right of way, that it's VDOT?
It'll be a VDOT right of way. We'd have to acquire the easement.
So, you don't need county permission to run that?
And I don't need the county's permission to acquire the right of way. If VDOT will let us put it in the right of way, if we can't, then we'll have to go to individual property owners and do a.
So, you're looking, what you want from the county is mandate.
Mandate the connection before we could ever get going. But again, council has voted to put the brakes on everything for now, and so we haven't done any more work on it. But it's not a county right of way, it's a VDOT right of way, and if it's not permissible in the right of way, and VDOT can be a little prickly about it, then we would have to go, the town would have to go to the individual property owners. But that's one of the things that we would have an expectation, is we would waive the connection fees in exchange for easement acquisition.
Yeah, Madam Chair, the, and if, if, if it's not covered, please let me know, because what I said is, at a time of the town's choosing to move forward with anything.
It's going to take a little while for us to figure this one out.
Right.
This is a little daunting, and the reason the Health Department money was good, because it's potentially able to get up to 49%, don't say grant, it's called loan forgiveness at the Health Department, but potentially, it could have been up to 49% loan forgiveness. And we're still waiting to hear on the other applications, but that would have been a good one for it, but.
And Madam Chair, too, the, the motion stated that let the, allow the town of Blackstone to have authority factors over connection mandates. So, what connection options? So, in other words.
Quiet.
In other words, we're granting them the authority to say whether they waive them because they choose to waive them or they.
But you're actually looking for the county to do the mandates, not give you the authority to do the mandates.
I will, either way, it just got to be figured out, I guess.
Could we perhaps?
I'm not an attorney, so I would have to do it. I will tell you this, in Amelia County, is that your attorney?
Two of them sitting on the Commonwealth.
In Amelia County, we, when we did a new water system, if you remember back in the late '90s, early 2000s, that water tank was constructed along 360, our attorney at that time recommended that we actually go to the General Assembly and have a mandatory connection of, I guess, a law or a, 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 a house bill introduced, and Tommy Wright and Frank Ruff both introduced them for us, and that's how we were able to mandate connection for water outside of our existing sanitary district, and that's why Food Lion and McDonald's and everybody are on.
Well, Madam Chair, there's a, I, I, he goes by the name Yogi, he owns the Wilburn's Country Store out there. He had approached me probably about a month and a half ago and said he wants the water, and he's also talked to them as well. But I think the bigger concern here is, it's obviously always kind of been in our lap, and there's citizens sitting here, and we also need to remember that those citizens came to this board. came to this board months ago and asked us to do this for them. And-
What those citizens asked, Mr. Rourke, is that we mandate, and we had no authority to mandate that they hook up. This board does not have that authority.
Madam Chair, a point of, a point of procedure here, so did, did, I remember, because we had so many people who were supposed to cook, did, so we voted on it. Was it a 4-1 vote?
Yes.
Well, if it's a 4-1 vote, I don't think he can put the motion on the floor. It has to be somebody that prevailed to change the motion. You, you with me?
Yep. That's correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So really, you can't, that's a, that's a legal motion.
Okay.
Is it an illegal motion?
Well, because, and I'm asking because I don't know, because I changed the wording in it from the previous one.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Van Orbach, tell us what you need. All the mayor, tell us exactly what you need from this board to get that going.
Madam Chairman, that was, what I was going to suggest is we actually get a motion.
Sorry.
I'm making a suggestion that we actually-
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Madam Chair, I ask, my, what we do in license is someone with the prevailing side of a motion makes a motion to reconsider. If that motion passes, the floor is open for a new motion. That's how we've done our rules of law in license.
Madam Chairman, if I may, on that point, your rules, because I checked this today, your rules allow for a motion to be reconsidered either at the, at that, at that meeting or at the next meeting. So I know that we're well beyond the next meeting, but I'm also hearing that Mr. Rourke's motion is somewhat different than what the board may have previously acted on. And now, if I could, I'd like to throw out the idea of perhaps Mr. Van Orbach and I getting together and crafting a motion with some explanatory material that would identify exactly what it is the board is being asked to do. That would accomplish what the town needs to have so that they can move forward. And I'd like to make it comprehensive so that it can be used for grant applications, loans, whatever the town and/or the county may want to, to do.
That's fine.
That's just a suggestion.
Sound reasonable.
Yeah, so as a-
Yes.
Yeah, so, um, this is what I, I think would be, I think this would be a gentleman-lady thing to do, okay? If Mr. Rourke would pull this motion back off the floor, Mr. Vaughn, if you, because this isn't your district, and so the citizen know that they still have some hope or something, to say, we make a motion that we will reconsider it. And then that gives them time to have conversation with-
Right.
But it would be reconsidering the original motion.
Right. And then, and then at the next meeting, maybe we, we get it down to what kind of motion needs to be put on the floor.
Madam Chair, I withdraw my motion.
Okay.
Maybe Mr. Van Orbach and I could get it done quicker than the leachate agreement.
That's in my motion.
What'd you say, Mr. Vaughn?
My motion is to give our county administrator and the town manager the authority to work together and craft the language that we need.
So we, we are reconsidering this issue?
That we will reconsider.
Second?
All right, so we have a motion and a second to reconsider. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion passes. All right.
That's all I had, Madam Chair.
Yeah, that was a quick one.
Mrs. Simmons?
Good stuff, good stuff.
Yes, Madam Chair, I would just like to share with the people that are here and with the board that we did attend a VACO meeting last week, and there were some things that I brought away from it that the public needs to know. You know that the Veterans Alert to Stop Suicide number is 988. Well, that number is not like a 911 number that goes to your county. That number, 988, goes to wherever you purchase your phone from. So if you purchase your phone in California, then that, when you call 988, that's where it's going, even though you live in Virginia. If you purchase your phone in Richmond and you call in 988 and you in Nottaway County, it's going to Richmond. So that number is not going directly to where you live. So everybody needs to know that. So 988 is not like 911.
I got you, I got you.
But if you're using your home phone, it will go to where you live, but not if you're using a cell phone. And also, attended two classes up there, the Health and Human Resources and Finance I attended. And we don't have, have anyone on the Finance, not Finance, I'm sorry. I attended the Education Conference. We do not have anyone on the Education Committee for VACO. But we do have someone on Finance, Mr. Vaughn's on Finance, and I'm on Health and Human Resources. But I attended the Education part while I was there also. And some of the things that we need to consider and think about is the SOL scores are very low because of COVID and because of the kids being out of school and not with the face-to-face learning. Also, foster care, looking for a lot of foster homes. We have a lot of kids that do not have a home, and we need more foster parents. We also, with the application of the Medicaid expansion during the COVID, we had over 2 million individuals currently on Medicaid. And that's going to change. It's, they're going to reevaluate to see whether the people are qualified to be on Medicaid. They will give them a notice, like a 60-day notice to tell them, but some people will not qualify for Medicaid now. So that's some of the things that we need to be aware of and thinking about. And also, human trafficking. Instead of treating human tra, human trafficking as victims, not criminals, because some of them are treated as criminals, and they're not criminals. They are victims. But there's a lot of other things, the House bills and the Senate bills that are going up, but I don't have time to talk about all of them right now, but that's just some of the things.
Thank you. Mr. Vaughn?
Okay. I went up last Wednesday, and we met Thursday. I'm on the Finance Committee, and the current economic conditions in Virginia is very, very strong. We have $1.5 billion in the Reserve Fund, what we call the Rainy Day Fund, but we're going to reduce it down to $900,000. Virginia employment rate was 2.8 in June, but over a year ago, it's 4.0. I'm not going to give you all these figures tonight from the Finance Committee, but we do a platform. We, what we do is, at the November meeting, every committee, whether it's Human Relations or Education or that, we come up, we build a platform, and we present it to the Virginia General Assembly. And with this economic thing, Virginia is, is looking pretty strong now. It's, we went through a trial period, a very time that, that our outlook, revenue outlook was not that good, but now it is coming back and it's looking very good. And we heard from several speakers at the convention, and as we listened to them, Regeball was the one that talked to us mostly about the economic conditions that Virginia is facing. But it was a very good, good meeting, and my contention is, if you don't go, you don't grow. So we have to keep up with what's going on in the state. And talking to other supervisors from throughout Virginia gave us a chance to talk about solar. It gave us a chance to talk about what Helen is talking about. It gave us a chance to talk about the various problems that we have as a board. All boards are facing similar problems, make no mistake about it. And there is nothing going on in Nottaway that's not going on in other, other counties. And I want to emphasize that very strongly. Some of the counties are doing a lot worse than, than Nottaway, I can assure you of that. But I know it's been some, someone was complaining about us attending these conferences. We're always, Nottaway County Board of Supervisors members have always attended these conferences, and the towns have always gone to the VML. One of the presidents of the VML was a Blackstone native. So our president of VACO this year, we've had two from Nottaway. We've had Mr. Vaughn is a recent one, and then we had Charlie Hooper. Mr. Hooper was, was, so when you hear about us attending conferences, don't, don't, don't be alarmed. We're going to continue to grow, and we're going to continue to keep up with what's going on around us and in this world. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Finally, for me, I do think VACO is a valued source of advocacy and education for Nottaway County, and I looked at the agenda, and the topics all seemed really important and worthwhile. These conferences provide opportunities to network and gain fresh perspectives on how other counties are dealing with the issues, as Mr. Vaughn said. I regret that I couldn't attend, but thanks to Mr. Costin and the board members who did. And very finally, I do have an update from the Cares Committee in relation to its fundraising efforts for the new animal shelter. The donations, positive report, donations now total $321,407.
Really?
Yep. We previously reported on the $50,000 Challenge Grant, for which the committee was seeking matching donations. They've already reached $48,648 in matching donations. Meeting challenges is something this committee does very well, and on behalf of the board, I extend appreciation and congratulations. And they wish to express a big thank you to Blackstone Animal Clinic for their 50/50 fundraising raffle that will continue until September the 2nd and is generating some very impressive donations. And raffle tickets are available by phone at the clinic, 292-1298, or in person at the clinic. And that's all from me, so. Looks like we'll need a motion to enter closed session.
Madam Chair, I move the Board of Supervisors of Nottaway County, Virginia adjourned into closed meeting pursuant to the Code of Virginia 2.2-3711A8, for consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by Nottaway County regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel specifically regarding insurance and water service options. 2.2-3711A3, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or of the disposition of a publicly held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the public body, specifically property in or near the town of Crew. And 2.2-3711A1, assignment and performance of specific county employees specifically relating to personnel matters now pending in Nottaway County Administration.
All right, we have a motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, this meeting will now enter closed session. All right, this meeting will now enter closed session.
I'll be in touch, team.
I'm glad over here.
Yes, I know.
We have some people who, you know, like, thinking about it, they can't tell if you, somebody's got a problem.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
It's loud over here.
Yeah, very much so.
Figure, see, you want to, if they put a, goes on, they put a fork, you, on surprise, we've been reporting to them, and you, you use them, and they try to borrow one against them, the proceeds, whatever.
I tell you, the bag might lose, but that doesn't impact your, like, things.
How do you? All words, that wouldn't want to, really work.
The user, please, hold, so.
Where is it?
There's a bag.
It's close.
We have, we have, we have, we have, we have.
Yeah.
We have, we have.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, that's, you're also.
But, but they always take the road.
Uh, the, uh, makes us sad, or the, the ramp, the turn off, the, the, but we didn't, like, do that.
Chairman, he didn't say nothing. He was going.
That's what I'm saying. Next time, I'll take him to sleep.
Come on, Tim. He go home. No, he fell asleep back there.
No.
Wiping his ass, so.
I hope he ain't going home. Who'd be sending him home? He's got a server time.
And he don't have a cell phone.
No. I just said, could Paige go get it? That's why they cut it up. He'll give us a number later.
Yeah, on Zoom either.
Yes. This is one of those nights we would crack the field. Don't even drink.
All right. We're not blaming you, Sharon.
All right, this meeting will now reconvene in open session. Ms. Simmons, could you provide certification of closed session?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas the Nottoway County Board of Supervisors has convened an executive meeting on this date pursuant to the affirmative record vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board of Supervisors that such executive meeting was conducted in conformity with the Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Nottoway County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully accepted from open meetings requirements by the Virginia law were discussed in the executive meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the executive meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board of Supervisors. And three, no action was taken in the executive meeting regarding the items discussed.
All right, we have a motion for certification. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Coniston, will you roll call the board?
Yes, ma'am. Supervisors Rourke, do you so certify?
Yes.
Supervisor Bowen, do you so certify?
Yes.
Supervisor Simmons, do you so certify?
Yes.
Supervisor Vaughn, do you so certify?
Yes.
Madam Chairman, do you so certify?
Yes.
The vote is five zero, Madam Chairman.
All right. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Remove. Second. Third.